Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call this regular meeting the Hinkley Township Board of Trustees to order on Tuesday, January 2, 2020. Correction, Tuesday, January 16, 2024 at 6:30 PM. Call the roll, please.
Squay.
Here.
Asher.
Here.
Engel.
Here.
To ask everybody to join us in honoring the flag.
So.
Flag allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of the United States.
One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Who moved that flag?
The feeling piles are all intact, so not you.
Yes, they are.
Who's messing with my hand?
That was the little trick, see who's really paying attention.
I would say it was obviously not I. Chief, would you just like to take care of these folks first?
Yes, I would like to.
Please.
I'd like to request to hire firefighter EMT Kyle Bowman and firefighter paramedic Daniel McAllister at a rate of 1550 pounds.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
You guys want to step up and?
Yeah. Did you name both?
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Did I get a vote? Did you name both? Yeah, I said both. Very good.
Okay.
Okay.
Go up to the flag over there.
I didn't know if they're gonna listen.
All right, Kyle.
Dan.
Nice to meet you, Kyle. Nice to meet you. Okay.
Raise your hand and repeat after me. Aye.
Aye. Daniel McAllister.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear. Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution.
I will support the Constitution. That I will support the Constitution.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Ohio.
The Constitution of the State of Ohio. And the Constitution of the State of Ohio.
And will faithfully discharge the duties of a volunteer fireman.
And will faithfully discharge the duties of volunteer fireman. And will faithfully discharge the duties of a volunteer fireman.
For Hinkley Township and Medina County.
For Hinkley Township and Medina County. For Hinkley Township and Medina County.
State of Ohio.
State of Ohio. State of Ohio.
During my service in the fire department.
During my service in the fire department. During my service in the fire department.
You guys want to go down to the fire station? You guys go down if you want to do a picture. Thank you, guys. Thank you. You guys are good to go.
That was it.
That was it. Good to see you. Good luck.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
It got really empty.
It's gonna get cold. Those bodies were warming up here.
Well, that crowd heat kept it from coming on. All right, I will move to approve the minutes for the December 19, 2023 Regular Trustee Meeting.
I will second, but I would like to add into the minutes the email that was sent to us by Doug Kraus. It was given to us that evening at the meeting. I emailed that electronically to all of you last week. The email with the stipulations.
Would you like to add anything to the memorandum?
Yes, please.
All abstained.
So.
Any further discussion?
Second as amended.
Second as amended. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Move to approve the minutes for the January 2, 2024 Special Trustee Meeting for an organizational meeting.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Move to approve the minutes for the January 2, 2024 Special Trustee Meeting for the interview of candidates for Opens zoning board and Board of Zoning Appeals positions and possible appointments.
Second.
So I'd like to just speak on correction in that big paragraph there. Says further discussion occurred regarding Board of Zoning Appeals candidates. It should be both zoning appeals and the zoning commission because we talked about three applicants for four vacancies.
Second as amended.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
And move to approve the minutes for the January 2, 2024 Regular Trustee Meeting.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Martha.
Okay, you have a list I emailed you, Jack, if you wouldn't mind making those for a motion.
We'll do that. Move. Let me see. I'll write one here. In accordance with the contractual agreement with Medina County Sheriff's Office, move to pay the 2024 invoice for dispatch services in the amount of $67,235.38 as follows. Police, $40,341.23, and fire, $26,894.15.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Move to approve the annual capital one fee of $95.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Move for a resolution to reallocate $2,000 from 2192-220-190-0000 fire department salaries to 2192-220-212-0000 Social Security.
Second.
Discussion.
That's necessary because of the three payrolls in January. Usually we only have two. And then by the time we have the February payroll work into our permanence, but the three payrolls were a little shy on Social Security.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Move to reimburse eligible employees for 2023 HRA deductibles due to medical mutual and updating the 2023 HRA reimbursement amounts from $3,000 to $3,100 and from $6,000 to $6,200.
Second.
Discussion.
So a big explanation from that is that we did resolve that mid-year of last year, but there were at least two employees who had significant claims that did were already over the deductible by the time it was discovered by medical mutuals. So it's going to be very limited number of employees.
Very good. Anything else? All in favor?
Aye.
Anything else, Martha?
I do have an inner review of the the six o'clock organizational meeting minutes. And then, and we run into this when we have our organizational meeting and then we make amendments throughout the year. And then we use our old organizational meeting minutes as a template carries over. And then we go back and we look and we say, okay, we gotta address this. So there were a couple of things in there based on conversations and the motions that I provided the board with, with a listing of the the motions. And I would like, I'll explain them, but I would like the board to then approve these amendments as submitted. And then they will be included. Since you haven't approved those meeting minutes, they will become part of the meeting minutes that hopefully will have everything in there that we need to carry over. So the first one was the building rentals, which we did discuss Rogers Park and the township facility. Mr. Pearl actually brought up a good point. Not all organizations have proof of liability. They might be small organizations or groups. So my recommendation is to change that line that says organizations may be required to provide proof of liability insurance coverage as per the rental agreement. That just clarifies it so that it's a, you know, 350 Hinkley or a smaller group that it's not necessary, but if the Red Cross uses it as per our rental agreement at other dates like that large groups that it will require. Second, second is that I gave you a list of the fire department wages and positions. The one thing happened last year with Chief Rosenbaum's wages. They were amended later on in January. And so his actual annual rate will be $40,234.63. That's actually the 2.5 of the amount that was approved in January 17, 2023 minutes of 38,000, I'm sorry, 39,253.30. In the future, I'm going to recommend not putting wages at all in the draft template of the organizational minutes because I think it's just the carryovers just confuse things. The other thing is the OIC is not a new position that, as we approved it, it's actually an existing position. So that will be 1937. And then to move firefighter EMT to 1664. Moving down to the service department instead of their monthly stipend for the cell phones. It's going to be quarterly stipend for $75. So that's listed out in the organizational minutes. And that also their annual uniform allowance. The purchases are approved by the trustees in accordance with the allowable uniform purchase list that was created mid-year last year. And then finally, the third-party assistance should specifically say zoning, third-party assistance. And so if you have no questions, I would ask for a motion to approve these as submitted. And then they will be put in to the organizational minutes with Jack making the motion. And however the vote goes on, on them.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion?
Hopefully we can come up with a system so we're not having to search so much.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. That is all I know.
It will move to pay the bills in the amount of $192,633.04.
Second.
Second, Ed. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Good evening. First item on my agenda, motion to hire RDM mechanical to install electrical outlets throughout the police department as part of the camera status monitor project for a total cost of $750.
So moved.
Second.
How many outlets is that?
It's about six.
That's a pretty good deal. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Next item I have is a request approval to purchase through TAC Computers, the network computer station that is part of the security camera and RMS monitor project within the police department. The $5,103.61 has been reduced to $3,003.43. We removed one invoice for the Raspberry computers off of the request. We were able to figure out a workaround, so we do not need to make that purchase to complete the project.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
We have one additional item, the two new cruisers that are getting built out first. We need to purchase the running board light kits for those through HG2 Emergency Lighting Services out of Orlando, Florida, at a total cost of $1,358.
358?
Yes. The quote's in your package.
Is that for both?
Both vehicles or per?
That's for both vehicles.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
That's all I've got.
Chief Rosenbaum.
Good evening. Request appropriations for a total not to exceed $900 for the Maxwell Leadership Training Course for Lieutenant Johnny Thomas through the Howie Fire Chiefs Association, February 26th through 28th at Seville Guilford Fire Department. The class is a total of $375. And then the additional $525 goes to Lieutenant Thomas's hourly wage. It's, this covers leadership and understanding. He's got class assignments during class and then post-class. I was not able to arrange my schedule to meet up for it, so I was trying to take the class, too.
So moved.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Request appropriations for $55.20 for firefighter paramedic Daisy Stiglmeyer to attend the Fremont Fire Presents Kyle Romulus class, February 17th. This covers fire attack, pump operations, understanding pump pressures. The only thing, the class may be booked by tomorrow when we sign up, so I may be coming back and saying we're not, she's unable to attend the class. But as of yesterday, there was still open enrollment for it. And we're not, she's not looking for hourly rate. She's just looking for the tuition cost.
So moved.
A few seconds. Any discussion? Is Kyle a person or?
Yes, yes.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Daisy Pastor Paramedic, so I'd like to request firefighter paramedic Daisy Enman from move from her EMT rate of 1664 to the paramedic rate of $19 per hour per the organizational minutes.
Bianca.
Bianca, I'm sorry. Yes. We have, we have one more taking their paramedic.
I was gonna say Daisy Pass.
Ah, yeah.
Bianca, congratulations, Bianca.
Was there a second?
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Next is request to move firefighter EMT Adam Rejek from the cadet pay of 1550, 1515 to the EMT rate of 1664 per the organizational minutes he met his, his onboarding process of the hours required.
So moved.
Second. Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
That's all I have.
Good. We don't have anything from services this evening? Anything from zoning?
Just a reminder that we are still accepting applications for alternates for both zoning commission and Board of Zoning Appeals till the end of the month, to the end of the month.
Cemetery.
I think for cemetery.
Trustee Engelmann.
Okay.
We're just staying for the whole meeting.
Do you guys wish to depart?
Yes, please.
Sorry, Chief Rosenbaum.
Bye, guys.
Have a good night.
Can I ask a quick question?
Of one of these guys?
Both of them.
Absolutely.
Do any, Richard Pearl King Road, do any of your vehicles have the ability to control the traffic signal out here on the corner of?
Not at this time. ODOT has communicated when they do the updates and stuff that they were going to provide the fire department with two of the sensors that go there. But we have nothing at the other up until you get in runs with the side of control.
Same thing with the police. Thank you.
If anybody's outside the next two days, please be careful. It's supposed to be very frigid.
As opposed to the heat wave?
Yes.
For the last, the last couple of days.
Good evening, everyone.
So we've received correspondence from the zoning chair that the zoning text amendments were approved at the December meeting to move forward to the trustees consideration. So we'll need to schedule a public hearing. And kind of looking at, our next meeting is February 6th. If we wanted to do that, like either at six o'clock or at 6:30 with regular meeting to follow.
Our next meeting is, what did you say?
The sixth.
The sixth.
Is that, do we have 30 days from the time they send it or?
We have 30 days. We'll be in the timeline if we do it February 6th.
Then I think we should probably do that February 6th.
So do we want to do it like at six o'clock? Before the meeting or do you want to just schedule it at 6:30 with regular meeting to follow?
Um, that is actually kind of a crazy day for me. So if you guys would not mind just doing a 6:30 public hearing with a meeting to follow.
Okay.
Is that?
Yeah, it's okay.
Will you communicate that to Suzanne for the press notice?
Yes.
Okay.
Right. Next. As you may have seen, issue two passed in November with the law going effect in December 7th, and that relates to adult-use cannabis operations. And so the law does allow township trustees to decide whether they wish to prohibit or limit the number of adult-use cannabis operators within the township. We currently have in our zoning resolution, a restriction on medical marijuana that was put in place, I believe, in 2017. So it might seem some, it might seem like this might be something that we might want to consider as well in terms of a prohibition if that's what the trustees want to do or limit it or not do anything at all. So just like to get your feedback. And if we come to a consensus tonight, then if we want to do something, I can prepare a resolution for subsequent meeting.
I would actually like to do a little more reading on it before I say yea or nay, but.
Okay. Um, I would, my initial thought would be consistency, but I actually agree with Jack. I would like to do a little more research on it. Would this be something that we want to discuss at our work session in two weeks? Or would we like to discuss just at our next regular meeting on the 6th?
Well, we include it for discussion that we can vote on the 6th. Want to do that?
And then lastly, at the motion to approve appropriation of $25 to, for training for our newest zoning commission member, John Kales, to attend Medina County zoning workshop. Some are called zoning board basics on this coming Thursday.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye. Did you save the dollar?
I did. 25. That's for their organizational.
Anything further?
That's it for me.
Trustee Asher.
Okay, I have one that just got added in today. It is in your packet. I believe you both received an email as well from Suzanne with the Janet King renewal maintenance agreement. That is Janet King, who cleans the administrative building, the police department, the senior room. So I'd like to make a motion to renew our two-year maintenance agreement with Janet King at a cost of $796 per month to clean the police department twice per week, administrative building once per week, and the senior room once per month. Second.
Discussion.
Could you ask Janet King that Suzanne isn't the client? I mean, I just think we need to be the client because she, that's not the authorized signature. But we recommend that just the trustees sign any contracts. And so.
So just me, the administrative liaison?
The client would be Hinkley Township.
Okay.
And then whoever the authorized signature wants to be, which of the trustees wants to be there.
Got it.
Suzanne shouldn't be the, I mean, just for her own protection, she should not be the.
Got it. I will email. And there was no increase in the second year.
So can we approve that and?
You can. I just, you know, just make sure.
And get the updated contract. Okay.
Like I said, just for Suzanne's.
We're just going to vote on the contract right now, not the actual.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. So we're not going to sign it. We'll sign it today. We're just gonna.
You can approve it.
Approve it. Okay.
Just before anybody signs it, make sure that it's says the township.
Right.
Okay. Did you have a second?
I second.
All in favor?
Aye. Okay, I'd like to make a motion to contract with Life Safety Systems LLC for the annual central station monitoring agreement, fire alarm, March 2024 through February 2025 in the amount of $540.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye. Okay, I wanted to talk to you both. I'm not sure if you have had any communication with Doug Kraus since he was here on December, was it 19th? December 19th, when he was here, I did forward you the email that we received. Has anybody had any discussion regarding the land donation?
Oh, he had said he was going to send us.
The GIS.
Yeah.
From the county. I have not received anything. Have you?
I have not.
Cindy, have you received? Do you know if Tom Wilson has received anything?
I can find out. He has not mentioned it.
Okay. I just wanted to bring it up so that didn't look like we forgot about it. All right, I wanted to discuss with you both, the trustees' corner. I had emailed you both a version of it after our last meeting, something that I was kind of thinking of. I did email script type to see if they would be willing to put this back in, see if they were still willing to put this back in if the board agreed to it, so, which they are. So I'm not sure if either one of you had a chance to read what I had sent over, just literally a recap of what it is that we discussed at our last meeting.
Then this would be something that we'd see before it goes.
Um. Yes. We can, we can do that. I would assume as long as, I mean, we won't be able to for February because that's going to be quite a bit past the due date, past deadline, unless I just, you know, we write it based on that just February 6th meeting and submit it. You know, which we could do. And then March. I mean, we could do that if we continue to, you know, just send them and have board approval before it's submitted to script type. It's just puts it, you know, kind of one of the issues that I have with it is it's already at least two weeks delayed from the time at, you know, deadline to the time it prints and it goes to the home. So now we might be talking about three or four weeks, but I suppose something is better than nothing.
Yeah, I would think so. I mean, you know, we can maybe find two in months to come.
Okay.
But I think this would be good to get back in the habit of us communicating our
Okay.
message from the board.
Yep.
Okay.
Okay, so based on what I sent you, were there any recommended edits that you wanted to make or are you good with that?
No, this, I'm good. This is all relative to the things that have transpired.
We're going to transplant. We're going to transpire, yeah, so.
Okay.
I'd like to, yeah.
Thank you very much. I will send it. I told her I would send it to her tomorrow if it was approved, so we will get it in, so thank you. Um, and you know what I wanted, I should have asked this when um, the chiefs were still here. I just wanted to know for our work session in two weeks, were we planning, I know we had said it was kind of for the wishlist items to go over our wishlist. Um, and you know, now we're adding to it, that we're also going to discuss um, the cannabis. Uh, were you planning on having um, anyone from zoning, or chief centonner, or is this gonna be a trustee work session, or any department heads?
If I need someone, I'll bring them, but right now I'm just working on the information relative to the, what we're looking at and price quotes, you know.
Okay.
Yeah, if, if need be, then can contact Tom, but right at this point.
Okay.
I'll just see trustees.
Okay, and did we decide, um, moving forward to kind of play it by ear with whether or not we're going to need work sessions, or did you want to try and do like one a month?
Um, you know, let's get through this one at the end of the month, and then we'll see, because um, as the weeks go by, I, I, you know, touch more things, and maybe there won't be as much a need for work sessions.
Works for me. Okay, that's all I have.
Did you talk about this welcome letter?
No, I did not. Thank you for reminding me, um. I've got a lot of papers up here. Um, so Suzanne sent us the um, updated welcome letter for the new residents.
It was just the name that was changed?
It was just the names.
Yeah.
The only thing that changed was um, adding Cindy's name and her contact information. So if you are good with those changes, I can give her the thumbs up, so they can start distributing that.
Yep, works.
Works for me.
And now that's all I have.
Couple of items here that were off script. The Medina County Health Department requested an elected official, Hinkley, to attend their district advisory council meeting on March four. I will be attending that for us, bring back any information that's relative. Second is Medina County Health Department is working with a homeowner on Crystal Brook regarding a septic issue that's gonna require discharging the treated affluent to the road drainage. And I asked from them, I gave you guys a copy of the letter that I asked them to receive this from the Medina County Health Department, affirming that that's the only viable solution. And that's what this letter says, that there is no other way without creating additional problems for the neighbors that are affected by the ineffective drainage that's on that property right now, to handle the affluent. So it's treated, it goes to the road ditch, and they receive a permit that requires them to monitor that affluent and uh, do an annual inspection on it to make sure that it's being done properly. So with that, do you have any questions about that? If, if we're uh agreeable, I'll respond to the health department with uh, our township approval, if anyone has no issue with that. I will move to provide approval to the Medina County Health Department to uh they want us to approve the drainage to the road ditch of the treated affluent from the property at six four zero Crystal Brook Drive.
Oh, is it six five eight?
Six five eight.
That's the one.
Oh, six forty's been received. Six five eight, correct. Six five eight, Crystal Brook Drive, sorry.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Thank you for keeping us on loop on that.
Um, I also have a liquor permit transfer request for Fosters. Uh, there's no objection from Hinkley PD. And uh I will provide, uh, if agreeable, provide that we have no objection to it. Don't you want to need a motion for that one as well? Okay. Any objection to that from us, from the board?
They're transferring it?
They're transferring it from the previous owner to the new owner.
Okay.
Can I object? Wave the hearing.
Wave the hearing.
Oh.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And I have.
Just to clarify on that, just so no one misunderstands. The, the board of trustees does not have the authority to deny it. It's just that you guys are able to request a hearing with the liquor board if you have an objection. And then the liquor board will hear your objection, and then make a decision based on that.
And what I'm told is normally they look for law enforcement to.
Correct, yeah.
Okay, uh, couple additional motions. Move to approve the purchase of salt from Cargill Incorporated in an amount not to exceed nine hundred and ninety tons at the price of fifty dollars, ninety-seven cents per ton for the year of twenty twenty-four.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
I. What was that costing in?
Five zero nine seven. And move for a resolution to enter into, to an agreement with the Medina County Board of Commissioners pursuant to the authority granted in Ohio Revised Code three zero seven point one five for the purchase of materials that may be required for the construction, maintenance, or repair of any township road or building. The price of the aforementioned materials to the township shall be the purchase price and any expenses incurred in such purchase by the Board of Commissioners. The Board of Commissioners shall authorize Medina County engineer to handle the purchase and sale of such materials to the township as specified above. The agreement shall be effective from January one, twenty twenty-four, when signed, and will expire on December thirty-one, twenty twenty-four.
Second.
Any further discussion? Call the roll, please. Yes.
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 And I will move to go into executive session at the end of this meeting pursuant to Ohio Revised Code section one two one point two two, paragraph G subsection one, to consider the compensation of a public employee.
Second.
All in favor?
I.
Hi.
It's a resolution.
Yes.
Yes.
Azure.
Yes.
England.
Yes.
What department is it?
This will be for, uh, relative to the police grievance.
And I will abstain.
Very good. Okay, anything from the public?
Uh, Richard Pearl, King Road. Two weeks ago, ODOT was in, and I, I'm looking for a little more clarification of what they want to do. My understanding is they wanted a hundred and eighty square foot easement over by the historical center.
Correct.
And then there was some talk of taking down the wire across the intersection.
Replacing the signal, the lights, and the crosswalk lights, or upgrading everything that's there. And part of that, we, we can't really stop them from taking the property.
Sure.
Okay, but part of that, we had a discussion with them and asked them to provide information relative to doing what I would call an upgrade to the poles and stuff to make it look more in character with the downtown architecture that's in place.
So you talked about installing two new poles, I think, with two arms.
Um, I, if you want to hang around after, I can show you the drawings of what he's got.
Okay.
To do that.
I would, yeah. And then that's just replacing poles that are currently there.
That's my understanding.
I think there's one over by the park and one on this corner out here.
I don't think they needed an easement on the other side.
Yeah, right, right. They already have the easements, but they want to replace those poles. Is it simply gonna be just a metal pole?
Right now, and that's why we're asking.
Right.
And we also, I also asked for a cost expenditure to the township if we want to do that, and they won't pay for it.
Right. I wasn't sure if those two poles were gonna be decorative, or just the pole for the light for the crosswalk.
I think we would like to see them all be.
Got it. Thank you.
That's, that's what we are shooting for, yeah. That we would have to cover the expense on. The balance.
Yeah, he's, he's got a meeting with ODOT tomorrow. I just asked him again this morning. I was hoping to have it for tonight, but he's got a meeting with ODOT tomorrow morning, and he'll be getting us the information. I also need the finalized documents from him for the prosecutor's office to look at before we sign it for the easement itself, so. Okay, anything else? Right, with nothing else, I will uh I need another motion, or just adjourn into executive session now?
Yeah, we made the motion.
Okay. We will adjourn into executive session at seven eleven.
You
Martha, you need these, don't you? For the fire.
We'll move to come out of executive session at 7:45 PM. Second? Seconded by Engelmann. Call the rule, please. Yes?
Abstain.
Yes.
Okay, and we discussed the grievance that was provided by the Higginson Police Patrolman's Unit through the FOP, and have formulated a response denying the grievance. And I will make a motion to, to prepare that and have it signed by the board and sent to the police Union's legal representation and patrolman land us.
One second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Abstain.
Okay, anything else for tonight? I will move to adjourn at 7:46 PM.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.